Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Commissioners Meeting on this first day of April, April Fool's Day. But yes, we are really going to have a meeting today. So today, we are blessed to have our own veteran, Scott Castle, veteran from the Marines, who's going to lead us in the pledge. And we have John Kleindetz from CS Davidson, who's going to lead us in the invocation.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you join me in an attitude of prayer, including those watching on TV? Dear Lord of all, we plos today with thanks and requests. We thank you for the grace you show us, the gifts you give us, including life itself, and we thank you for the leadership that you've given us here on earth at all levels of government as we address the current challenges of the pandemic. You have challenges before. We have prevailed with your help. We will overcome this challenge with your help. We know that you are the miracle worker, promise keeper, and our light in the darkness. We have faith. We ask that you watch over those who contract the virus, save them. We ask that you continue to guide all of us as we respond to the challenges of this time, make us a better people for it, showing love and courage. And most importantly, we ask that you watch over and protect those who run to the virus and not away from it, our leadership, the frontline medical family, the community volunteers, the first responders, the military. Bless them and protect them as they help us. We thank you, and we ask these things in your holy name. Amen.
Thanks, John. Okay, the first thing up on the docket today is a proclamation regarding Child Abuse Prevention Month, and we are blessed today to have Deb Harrison with us, the President and CEO of the Children's Advocacy Center.
Come on up, Deb.
Child Abuse Prevention Month, April 2020. Whereas child abuse and neglect is a complex and ongoing problem in our society, affecting many children in York City and York County, and whereas every child is entitled to be loved, cared for, nurtured, feel secure, and be free from verbal, sexual, emotional, and physical abuse and neglect, and whereas it is the responsibility of every adult who comes in contact with a child to protect that child's inalienable right to a safe and nurturing childhood. And whereas York City, York County have dedicated individuals and organizations who work daily to counter the problem of child maltreatment and to prevent parents obtain the assistance, excuse me, and help parents obtain the assistance in need, and whereas our communities are stronger when all citizens become aware of child maltreatment prevention and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe and nurturing environment. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among families, social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community, and whereas all citizens, community agencies, faith organizations, and businesses will work to increase their efforts to support families. Now, therefore, we, the York City Mayor and York County Commissioners of Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim April 2020 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in York City and York County and urge our citizens to celebrate children, our greatest resource and the community leaders of tomorrow, given this day in York, in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, on the first day of April in the year of our Lord 2020, and witness whereof we have hereunto subscribed our names, Mayor Helfrich and the York County Board of Commissioners. Thank you, Deb.
Thank you so much to the Commissioners for allowing us to do this at this meeting. We had a press conference scheduled for this afternoon, and we were expecting a number of folks there, and of course, times are a bit different this year. But we will want to be celebrating Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month all month. I use the word "celebrate" because we do really want to recognize that children are our greatest resource, and we want to encourage the community to be aware of this issue and know what they can do to be involved and protect children and support them. Last year, we served 825 children at the Children's Advocacy Center. When you think about that, that's three to four kids, three to four families coming through our doors each business day to be, to receive forensic interviews and forensic medical exams. It's also Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and 75% of those 825 kids were referred for a report of sexual abuse. So that's part of the awareness that we want to bring to people's attention. And a lot of times, it can feel overwhelming to hear those numbers and think, well, what can we do as a community? And there is a lot that we can do. One of the exciting things that people have an opportunity to do is to take a training online, go to yorkcac.org and look for Safe and Healthy Communities Initiative, click on that while you're home, while you're quarantined right now, you can take some time to access this training. Our goal is to get 5% of adults in York County trained to understand how to protect kids. This is an initiative, the Safe and Healthy Communities Initiative is a county grant that we were able to get several years ago. It's a partnership with the Office of Children, Youth, and Families, the York CAC, and the YWCA. So that's something really concrete that people can do right now. Log onto their computers, go to yorkcac.org and click on Safe and Healthy Communities. The other thing to do is to be mindful of reporting abuse. Children are isolated right now in families, and families are very, very stressed. So you can check in on families if you're worried about how people are doing, make a phone call, ask them how they're doing, and don't forget the 1-800 number, 1-800-932-0313 is the child abuse hotline, so you can make those reports of abuse right now. Usually, it's school personnel, therapists, other people that kids are seeing, and so when they're not out and about, it's important that we be mindful of what our kids are experiencing. And the last thing quickly is to help us with some virtual awareness this month. We usually, usually see pinwheels all around York County related to Child Abuse Prevention Month. We're asking people to wear blue and post to social media, tag the York CAC on the social media, and so it's on Facebook, it is York County CAC. Tag your photo and tag us in it so that we can see your commitment to child abuse prevention. On Twitter, it is @YorkCAC. So you can go to both of those places, tag us, show your support for child abuse prevention, and show our children in our community how valuable they are and that they are our future. Thank you very much for having me today.
Thank you, Deb.
Thank you, Deb.
Thank you. Okay, move to item number five on the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through G, as listed below.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number six.
I make a motion to approve the appointment of Albert Gleihoff, York City, to the York County Railroad Authority for a five-year term effective April 1st, 2020, through March 31st, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number seven.
I make a motion to approve the appointment of Mark Durr, Chief Clerk Administrator, as the Designated Agent of the County of York to execute all required forms and documents on behalf of the county for the purpose of obtaining financial assistance under the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act for the EM 3441 COVID-19 Emergency Disaster.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
And Mark, as far as this, this financial resources possibly are?
Yes, these are the funds that the federal government is allocating to state and local governments for addressing the COVID-19.
Sign away. Any more questions, concerns, or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number eight.
I make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of Fleet Management and John Deere Company, Cary, North Carolina, for a John Deere 4044R tractor with attachments for use by the York County Parks Department for a total cost of $35,996.63 under a PA CoStarz contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number nine.
I make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of Fleet Management and Whitmoyer Auto Group, Mountjoy, Pennsylvania, for two 2019 Ford Transit 250 Prisoner Transport Units for use by the York County Sheriff's Department under a PA CoStarz contract. The total cost for each vehicle is listed in the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 10.
I make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of Information and Technology Services Department and Global Data Consultants, LLC, Chambersburg, Pennsylvania, for 10 Microsoft Surface Books and accessories for a total cost of $18,989.90.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I know Joe's here today. Any comments?
No, just to help with remote workforce.
Okay. So the comment that Joe made, just to help with remote work capabilities for employees. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm number 11.
I make a motion to approve the purchase between the County of York on behalf of the York County Prison and Offred, LLC, Eden, New York, for 30,000 masks at a cost of $2.40 per mask for a total cost of $75,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions?
And Mark, this is a request from the warden?
Yes, it was, and these would be one of the type costs that would be reimbursable under the grant, or the grant funding from the federal government that he asked about earlier.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 12.
Motion to approve a contract agreement between the County of York on behalf of Public Works Department and CS Davidson Incorporated, York, Pennsylvania, to provide a street sign retroreflectometer assessment at all York County-owned bridges to ensure they meet federal transportation guidelines for signage for a total cost of $10,750.
A second motion.
I have a motion and a second. John, any comments?
John, could you explain this? I read this twice. I'm not sure if I know what it is.
Sure. The reflectivity of signs is an important, it's basically, it's how well you can see a sign at night with the light on. So it's a reflectivity off of the sign. So the process is, there's a tool called a retroreflectometer that you actually hold up against a sign, and you can measure how well it reflects, and if it doesn't meet a certain standard, it has to be replaced. It's a federal requirement.
Okay. I knew that.
Learn something new every day.
Retroreflectometer.
Retroreflectometer. Okay, great. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm number 13.
Motion to approve a contract agreement amendment between the County of York on behalf of the Information and Technology Services Department and Tyler Technologies Incorporated, Your Mouth Main, for a change order to the original contract at no additional costs.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Joe? Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 14.
Motion to approve a bid award between the County of York on behalf of the Public Works Department and Collinson Incorporated, Utlchlin, Pennsylvania, the lowest responsible bidder for Bridge 100, Graydon Road, over the east branch of the Cadorus Creek in Springfield Township, for guide rail repair in the total amount of $10,137.50.
A second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm number 15.
Motion to approve the adoption of the York County Open Space and Land Preservation Committee Bylaws and Program Funding Operation Guidelines.
Our second motion.
Questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm number 16.
Motion to approve the release of funds in the amount of $9,972 to the Farm and Natural Lands Trust of York County to cover additional settlement expenses in the acquisition of a donated conservation easement of 383.27 acres in Mannheim and West Mannheim Townships owned by KHT Real Estate LP.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 17.
Motion to approve the extension of policy GI-17.1 Pandemic COVID-19 Work Operations Modifications on behalf of the York County Board of Commissioners, extending the date through April 15th.
Our second motion.
So just a comment on this. So at the Commissioners Meeting two weeks ago, I've lost track of time. We had, did the declaration through April 3rd, so we are extending it roughly another two weeks. We had originally, we're going to align the date with April 14th, which aligns with the courts, but our next Commissioner meeting will be April 15th. So that's why we're going to be one day off from the courts, and we will revisit on the Commissioners Meeting on April 15th. Any additional questions anyone might have? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm number 18.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2020-09 authorizing signature by the President Commissioner of a letter amendment, of amendment to master reimbursement agreement number 08A371 for the congestion management program Traffic Signal Timing Project, extending the current time limit to 10 years, terminating on August 14th, 2025.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions?
Wade, do you know anything about this, or, I mean, I'm sure it's pretty standard operating procedure, but I?
Yeah, I can provide a little bit.
Okay, yeah, I'm not really sure.
Yeah, the Master Reimbursement Agreement is an agreement between York County and PennDOT. It's administered through the Planning Commission. We originally set up the agreement in 2015. It expires in August of 2020, so we're extending that to 2025. What, that funding is all state and federal, that's not county funding. That's state and federal funding, and what that pays for is the Planning Commission staff through the York Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, the MPO. They prioritize intersections and corridors throughout York County based on congestion. So the goal is to use this funding to provide congestion relief in certain intersections and corridors. We work and facilitate between a consultant and the municipalities. We identify, the Planning Commission identifies the intersections, the consultant studies that and adjusts the pre-timed signals at those intersections. Some of those signals might have been put in 20 years ago based on a development and may not have been adjusted since to account for the additional development pressure in the area. So we're looking at those to see what can be done to adjust the timing signals, and then working with the municipalities to take on the maintenance of those signals.
So just one question, and we get comments every once in a while from people on Route 30, and obviously, it's supposed to be a bypass, it's really more like a road coming around the city, and there's a lot of timing issues. So if the public would have a question on whether it be Roosevelt Avenue and Route 30 or something, that they think the lights aren't functioning properly, would they call the Planning Commission, or is there a venue for them to voice their opinion?
Yeah, they can call the Planning Commission, and we can voice that, talk about it with Planning Commission staff, and bring it up to the MPO. Just to provide some clarity, those signals on Route 30, Route 94, Route 74 corridor, that's an adaptive signal, that's a little different than this, this funding. This funding's just for the pre-timed signals.
What's adaptive signal? I don't know what that means.
I believe it uses cameras to kind of.
Oh, so it changes if there's people waiting?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't, okay.
It kind of learns, it's an adaptive process. It learns as they get more, more traffic flow through and creates the most efficient signal.
So the more heavily traveled areas would probably have those adaptive resources?
Yeah, but yeah, if they have questions, they can call the Planning Commission.
The Planning Commission number is?
717-771-9870, and our website is www.ycpc.org.
Thanks, Wade.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 19.
I'd like to make a motion to table Resolution 2020-10 for further discussion.
Our second motion.
So I'll make a few comments, and then I'm going to ask Mark Durr and our solicitor to share any additional comments that they would like. So certainly, top of mind, we know from our residents, is the tax bills and the payment of the tax bills. Our understanding is that counties and municipalities do not have the ability to modify the percentages associated with the discount period. And so, we can state that the discount period will remain as is. We are working with our municipal leaders and the tax collectors and those respective municipalities to discuss the options around the penalty portion of the tax bills. So with that, I'll ask Mark to make any additional comments he might have.
As Commissioner Wheeler explained, based on the state law, the local tax collection law, it specifies the rebate date based upon the mailing of the tax bill. The mailing of the tax bill was February 15th, so the rebate date would actually be April 15th, which is specified in state law, so the state legislature wouldn't, we believe, would need to make that change. The legislation does allow the taxing authorities to modify the penalty amount, not the penalty date, but the penalty amount, and it can be set anywhere from 0 to 10%. So the consideration is whether or not the penalty amount would be modified during the penalty period. At this time, we've reached out to the municipalities, and we've received input from the municipalities and the tax collectors, but at this point, we don't have a consensus from either the municipalities or the tax collectors, and we'd like to try to build some of that consensus and not make a premature decision on the penalty, which is why Commissioner Smith was making a motion to table the resolution.
Michelle, any additional comments?
The only thing I would echo, it sounds, I know if you're listening to this, that it's a bit confusing, so just in a manner to try to simplify it, we believe that our interpretation of the statute is that the counties cannot change dates and timelines, but the counties can change percentage amounts. So the discount percentage, the penalty percentage, those are the only things really in the law that clearly they can change. And so the Commissioners are considering that option as, as we move forward, and they make that decision with regard to taxes, just to try to simplify it.
And as Mark said, we want to be as collaborative and build as much consensus as we can with the municipality. So we will revisit this at the last Commissioners Meeting in April.
And Mark, I guess maybe just to go on record, you know, since we're tabling this, and we're basically saying that April 15th, the 2% discount will be in effect, and taxpayers can pay their taxes that time or before and get the rebate. And then through June 15th, which is the face amount, we're asking to communicate with our local municipalities that everybody remembers, we sent out their tax bills with the county and the local municipalities tax on there. So most, most times, you went in to write one checkout for the county in West Manchester Township. So we're communicating with the townships and boroughs to find out if they would, in fact, you know, agree to possibly make a change in the rebate period, which could be extended through the end of the year.
I just want to be clear, we're not changing the time period. We only have the power to change the amount of the penalty.
Change the amount of the penalty, yeah. I get that wrong every time I say it. So, so we're saying that we're looking for some communication, and as Commissioner Wheeler said, you know, we hope within a month that we can make this decision and collectively do it together, so it makes sense for not only the residents and taxpayers, but the tax collectors also who collect these, these bills.
Not trying to create a nightmare for them.
Right.
We want to assure the public that this is top of mind, and we, we've heard from you all, and we are taking this very seriously.
Right.
So do we need a motion and approval to table it?
I already did.
But we have to vote.
Take an approval.
You need a second. Okay, so I just want to make sure I'm following Robert's rules properly. So I have a motion and a second to table motion number 19. So any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so we've tabled motion number 19. So item number 20.
Motion to approve the submission of a grant application on behalf of York County Department of Probation Services to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency in the amount of $149,974 with no matching amount to fund a part-time executive director for the York County Reentry Coalition and to fund a wraparound program for individuals with families reentering the community from jail. Project period is October 1st, 2020, through September 30th, 2021. The breakdown of the funding is as listed below.
Our second motion.
And I know April Billet Barclay is not here today, but if you're watching, thank you, April, for all your hard work in pulling this grant together. Appreciate that. So I have a motion and a second. Any questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 21.
Motion to approve the Tax Refund Register 2020-04 authorizing the payment of York County real estate tax refunds totaling $8,469.79.
Second motion.
A motion and a second. Any questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I have number 22.
Motion to approve the Check Register for the week of April 1st, 2020, totaling $10,323,131.70.
Our second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions?
And Mark, this is a little higher this year, it's because of?
This, this week's insurance, or disbursements include about $1.6 million in debt service payments that were made on March 15th, and $4.3 million in insurance payments for health insurance, life insurance, and prescription medications.
Okay, next.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. No report, no executive sessions between our last Commissioners Meeting. Onto other business. For those of you that have been watching us, I think you are aware that we've been using this time to share communications from our partners in the community. And today, we have with us Robin Rohrbach, who's the President and CEO of the Community Progress Council, who is going to share a few comments with us. For those of you that don't know Robin, you can ask for a better leader and advocate to lead this organization. So thanks for coming to share with us today and what you're doing, and how the community can help, and where to go for resources.
Sure, thank you. Thanks for having me and giving me the opportunity to talk a little bit about Community Progress Council and where we are today in this crazy scenario, right? Just as, by means of background, my name is Robin Rohrbach, President and CEO of Community Progress Council. Our agency is York County's Community Action Agency, and I do mean York County. We serve the entire county. We have more than 20 locations throughout York County that we provide services out of. So many people think that we are a city-based organization, and that's all we serve. We serve all of York County, so I want to make sure folks know that. Our mission is to empower individuals and families to move towards self-sufficiency. And in this particular time, I also want to emphasize the second part of our mission statement, which is to advocate for change, to promote community growth. And I want to emphasize that because at this time in particular, where folks who have lived in generational poverty will fall deeper into poverty, and others who have never really experienced a significant long-term financial challenge will, by this situation, fall into poverty. I just want folks to know that we're watching out, we're recording information, and we're ready to advocate for their needs, both at an individual level and at a systems level, to make sure that everything is happening in a fair and equitable manner. I am going to mention websites and information. I hope that folks who are listening or watching on television have a pen and pencil or a pen and paper so that they can be writing this stuff down, because it's, it's important information. Everything that I talk about is going to be listed on the Community Progress Council website. That's yorkcpc.org. Another. Another great resource is Community Progress Council's Facebook page, so I would encourage folks to like us on Facebook so you can get all of that information as well. And finally, if you can't remember those two things or didn't get a chance to write it down, 211 is your resource for every piece of information, and I'm confident that they are staying up to date on everything that's happening throughout the county, so 211, pick up your phone, call it, and find out what you need to find out. Community Progress Council has aligned its operations with the governor's state of emergency or closure. We will be closed to the public until April 30th. However, we have many staff throughout York County working hard every single day, we are doing a work-from-home situation. The exception to that is our WIC program, Women, Infants, and Children, it's a supplemental nutrition program. We are actively working in that program, we are taking new referrals, and we are processing folks who have been on WIC and need updates to their benefits. So we update EBT cards on a three-month basis. If folks have an appointment for April, they should wait, the office will call them to talk to them about how and when that appointment will occur. So let me repeat that, because I fumbled. If you have an April appointment, you will be seen or talked to, wait for the office to call you, and they will talk to you about how you will be served, if you are current client. If you need services and you're not currently receiving them, please call WIC and see about opening up benefits for yourself. This program serves pregnant women, postpartum women, and children up to the age of five. Eligibility is based on family size, health risk factors, and income. So if you need WIC, call 717-846-7942. And I really think this is a wonderful opportunity for every single family with a child under the age of five who is income-eligible to begin accessing WIC, whether you feel like you need it today or not. Times are gonna be hard for a while, so use this resource if you can. Again, WIC, 717-846-7942. They will call you if you're an existing client, if you are interested in services, you call them, okay? The second program that is, can you speak English, folks? This Saturday, we are doing a virtual homebuyer workshop. Again, that is an eight-hour class, we'll do it virtually, so you're gonna have to have a camera on your computer. If you're interested in that homebuyer workshop, the email address to learn more is housing@yorkcpc.org. Again, housing@yorkcpc.org, if you're interested in Saturday's eight-hour-long homebuyer workshop. Wonderful information, it will prepare you for purchasing a home, and there may be opportunities like never before in the future, we don't know. The third thing that our housing department is doing, and I think this one is extremely timely, is a workshop, again, it will be virtual, called Take Charge of Your Money. It really helps folks to understand how to budget, how to manage credit, how to get out of credit concerns, credit problems. We are offering that course next week, Monday through Friday, every day, Monday through Friday, from 11:00 to 12:15, and then again, from 2:00 to 3:15. If you sign up for the 11 o'clock class, we're gonna expect you to be there five days in a row at 11:00. If you sign up for the 2:00, five days in a row at 2:00. Again, the email address to sign up for any of those two classes, homebuyer or Take Charge of Your Money, is housing@yorkcpc.org. The Spanish Facebook Live session tomorrow to answer questions about foreclosure, eviction, paying your bills, is tomorrow at 1:00. I did ask our team about the homebuyer and take charge of your money sessions, we are working in Spanish, we are trying to work the kinks out of systems, and we hope to provide those two sessions virtually in Spanish in the coming weeks, week hopefully, okay? I do want to emphasize to everyone who's listening, while there is a moratorium on evictions and foreclosures, and many other creditors are giving some grace to folks, I want to emphasize the importance of paying something or paying if you have the resources now. Please don't allow yourself to get behind on bills, well, don't allow yourselves to get behind on bills, pay what you can. Second part of this really, really, really important statement is get a receipt. If it's a canceled check, if it's a confirmation number, if it's a photo of an online payment, if your computer screen shows that you paid, take a picture of that and keep it. Again, this comes into line with us being advocates for change, we are concerned that some folks may be taken advantage of. Make a payment, get a receipt, okay? That's your protection. So the third thing I'll say, I really will stop talking. The third thing I'll say is that we, all of our other programs, our Head Start, our Early Head Start, Foster Grandparent Program, our Work Ready Program, and our Self-Sufficiency Program, we have clients in those services throughout York County. We have coaches and caseworkers who are calling those families on a daily basis, we're getting some feedback from families like, okay, leave me alone now, enough already, I'm okay. But we want everyone to know that because our doors aren't open and you're not coming to us doesn't mean that we're not still working with you. If you are having concerns, please call the worker that you're aligned with, or let us know at Community Progress Council by dropping an email. We should be in contact with folks on a regular basis. We are sending training material out to families, we're engaging our kids from early childhood education, we're still providing some special support services virtually, so programs are continuing to operate. So in closing, I'm just gonna reiterate a couple of details, so that if folks missed it and now they have their pen and paper, they can get it. Community Progress Council on Facebook, please like us, follow the information there. Our website, yorkcpc.org, has a lot of information, not just about what we are doing, but information from HUD and other sources about housing rights and responsibilities during this COVID experience, other kinds of information about where to get food. A lot of folks are struggling with food. Again, if you can take advantage of those services and reserve your liquid cash for other things other than groceries, we're encouraging people to go get those food resources, we're in this for the long haul. And then the third thing is 211. I can't be a strong enough advocate for the wonderful resource that we have in 211, and York County's been very fortunate to have that information and referral line before it became a state and national thing. So use 211, that's your go-to. Thanks again for giving me the time.
Before we let you go, just in case, Mark, are there any questions on Facebook Live, maybe for Robin before we move on?
Can I ask you one question, Robin?
Sure thing.
As far as the funding and federal government and other funding you're getting in, do you have the capacity to handle the people in York County that are asking for resources, or is there a waiting list for some of these programs?
There are waiting lists, I think we would be challenged today to take new clients in some of our programs. There are waiting lists for things like Head Start and Early Head Start, we are funded to provide services to a certain number of people. I can say that when there was the financial crisis in 2008, 2009, community action agencies were given a special allocation of money to help people bounce back. We will be getting similar resources this time, so that's part of the reason why I wanted to be very clear that we're tracking what the needs are. No questions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That is a wealth of information.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I just have a couple other quick updates, so from Jane Conover, the president and CEO of the York County Community Foundation. The York County Community Foundation, The United Way, and local private foundations have come together to create a York County COVID-19 fund. Initially, grants from the fund will go to support nonprofit organizations that are meeting increased demands for food and housing for those most impacted by the crisis, and you heard Robin talk a little bit about that in her speech. Grant applications are not being accepted at this time. The grant-making staff at the Community Foundation and The United Way are working with the county, Department of Health and Human Services, and an advisory committee of local nonprofit service providers to quickly identify needs and provide grant funding where it's needed most. And these are people that are on the front lines and have the ability to assess those needs in the community. After the first month, the grant-making advisory team will evaluate community needs related to the COVID crisis and determine future priorities for grant-making. Anyone out there listening who would like to support the fund at this time, you can make donations in two places. One is at the York County Community Foundation website, and that's www.yccf.org, or the United Way website at www.unitedway/yorke.org. So thank you to Jane for providing that update. A quick update from the York County Economic Alliance, they continue to encourage interested applicants to direct their efforts to the current Small Business Association programs via the federal government. The much-anticipated Paycheck Protection Program is likely to launch later this week. The application will be applied via participating banks. And the York County Economic Alliance is hosting several free webinars with subject matter experts, as well as hosting other informational webinars submitted by area organizations. And the best place to go to check for that information is www-preparedyork.com. I'm almost done. Our friends at UPMC, for those who, UPMC Hanover is working with UPMC Pinnacle to schedule patients at its emergency departments to accommodate testing for COVID-19. UPMC Hanover has been testing patients daily at scheduled appointment times. And then from our friends and colleagues at Wellspan, so first of all, Wellspan wants to thank all York Countyans for their efforts to slow the spread of COVID-19. We are all one community that's united, and I think we've all been talking about continuing to practice social distancing and respiratory etiquette so we can do our best to flatten the curve. The county's working with our partners in healthcare and social services, is actively preparing for the increase in the number of positive COVID-19 patients across our community if necessary. So an example of this is Wellspan Health has opened care locations to provide non-emergency care for COVID-19 patients. This is for patients who have no emergent health needs and are either confirmed or suspected to have COVID-19, they can visit one of the following locations for non-emergency treatment of health concerns. So those places are Wellspan, OB-GYN, and Wellspan Pediatric Medicine, and those are located at 2050 South Queen Street in York. They will provide primary care services for children and all adults, and they will be open from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Saturday and Sunday. We need to ensure our friends and neighbors with COVID-19 have access to the care they need while also keeping other care locations as safe as possible. So a friendly reminder, patients who may be experiencing symptoms related to COVID-19, including fever, cough, fever, and shortness in breath, or a combination of all three, are asked to please call the primary care provider first before going into an office or an urgent care facility. And I'll reiterate what we have shared on the past few calls, individuals who do not have a primary care provider or need additional information are encouraged to call Wellspan's Coronavirus Information Hotline, and I'm sure you already have a pen, because Robin asked you to get a pen, so the number is 855-851-3641. York County residents should not avoid seeking the care they need during COVID-19. While we all follow recommended social distancing, community members can still schedule a telephone visit or a video visit with their provider using the camera on a smartphone, laptop, or tablet. We need everyone to come together as one united front to slow the spread and keep our friends and neighbors safe. So thank you to all those organizations out there for sharing that information with our community. So with that, we are on to the period of public comment, and certainly, we've been using this time the past couple meetings to answer some like high-level questions on, are the parks open, are they not open, is the county open or not open, and we are still happy to entertain those questions. But I want to make it clear that during the public comment, the commissioners won't be deliberating on issues or taking any vote, so I just want to put that disclaimer out as we kind of field questions from Facebook, or you can call in at 717-771-4333. So I'll just ask Mark if there's any questions from Facebook.
No questions. We are slightly delayed on the Facebook feed.
Okay, no problem.
Not by much more than like a minute. William Corcoran said, "Good morning."
Good morning.
Amy Barnhart Miller said, "Great job, Robin."
Go, Robin.
And while I'm standing here, I want to say that WJL did a piece of this happening in Lancaster County, but it's happening in York County as well, people calling 911 with non-emergent needs. It's not a general inquiry line, only call in an emergency, and I can even read, this is Pima's guidance that they've sent out, when to call 911 for emergencies. Call if you have difficulty breathing or choking, have a severe allergic reaction, have symptoms of heart attack or stroke, which feels as though an elephant is standing on your chest, or if you have limpness on one side of your body or both, have sudden severe pain, have difficulty speaking, walking, and seeing, are confused, disoriented, or dizzy. Do not, do not call 911 if you want information about COVID-19, if you need a ride to the doctor's office, if you want to get tested, or if you have mild symptoms. So just keep that in mind and tell your friends and neighbors.
Great.
And I will check again for comments, seeing none.
Okay, great. So we'll just close, again, thank you to everyone out in the community, we know and understand these are unprecedented times, and thank you for rallying together as a community, and that's one of the things I love about York County, is we all kind of come together when things get tough, so thank you for your continued commitment to our community. And then just to remind everyone, the Incident Command Center is in place, and I would be remiss to give names, but I'll probably forget somebody, so for those volunteers and people working at the county at Incident Command, thank you for all you're doing, they're getting a lot of requests and funneling a lot of information and mobilizing people to help our community in need. And just as a reminder, the number for Incident Command is 717-840-2990. So with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I have a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone. And I believe we're gonna move on to Salary Board.
I'll make a motion to approve the positions, salaries, hours of work, and fringe benefits as provided by existing collective bargaining agreements, where a set forth in the York County Employee Handbook or York County Policy Manual for the following departments with no additional benefits or concessions, unless otherwise noted, as stated in the internal Salary Board detail. Department 17 Information Services, Department 31 Juvenile Probation, Department 39 Prison, Department 70 E911, and Department 79 Area Agency on Aging.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mark, any question?
Nope.
Okay, any other questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and a motion to adjourn.
And I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, and I think that closes us out for today. So thanks, everyone. So thanks, everyone.